Welcome to the May 23, 2017 Board of County Commission Meeting. If you would, go ahead and turn your phones off and stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the invocation by Pastor David Ellis of Walton County Baptist Association. Welcome, Mr. Ellis.
Let's pray. Father God, we come into your presence. We celebrate you and we celebrate your gift of life through your Son, Jesus Christ. Father, I lift up this meeting to you. Father, I just ask that you have your way and your will be done. Father, I lift up these commissioners to you. I thank you for their service. Father, I just ask that you give them your wisdom to lead Walton County. Father, that it is successful, that it is prosperous. And Father, I just ask that you give them that wisdom to look out for the citizens and make the right decisions that do make Walton County that wonderful place to live that we know that it is. Father, we just ask that all the things on the agenda, Father, will be done according to your will. And Father, that you will show favor in things that need to be done and things that do not need to be done, that our commissioners can make the decisions that they need to make. Father, just bless our day for your glory, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. Mr. Sunday, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. We do have two additions that were requested to add to the agenda. They are both under Commissioner Commander. The first is a request to approve a resolution opposing offshore drilling. And the second, she's going to provide you a consortium update.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, like sign. Public comments. This is a time that you may speak if you need to leave early. We'll have public comment under each agenda item, but if you need to leave early or can't stay for the meeting, we wanted to give you an opportunity to speak now. Okay, seeing none? Are there any items that you want to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion, do we have second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Waste Management EAL, Mr. Chapman.
Madam Chair, acknowledging my conflict of interest, I filed a proper form with the clerk. I will abstain from the vote.
Okay. Approval of the Waste Management EALS.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Mr. Sunday.
Thank you, Commissioners. The first item that we have on the agenda is a recognition of some of our staff. Back on May 10, Commissioner Nippers rode for him. Mr. Henry Ganey was about his normal duties during the day when he came upon a residence on Huckabee Road and noticed a fire that had begun in the backyard of the residence. No small fire, I might add. He took some swift action on his own and extinguished the fire and actually, you know, saved the property. And we think that, we know Mr. Ganey and we know that he didn't think twice about it, but we think that this was a phenomenal act on his part and we would like to recognize him for that. And I believe Ms. Hundley is here and she would like to speak to you.
It was a pretty bad fight. I brought pictures just so you could see. My mother lives alone on Huckabee Road with her two dogs. And so, Mr. Ganey saved the dogs because the fire came right up to the dog pen and then saved her home. And she had been there for about 30 years. So everything, the memories, everything in that home means so much to my family. So he did an outstanding job and deserves to be recognized.
Thank you for coming forth. And you know, with this in mind, I think it would be great if we consider maybe an Employee of the Month or a Quarter or, you know, this could be a start off to recognize. We have so many positive things going on that, you know, we don't sell ourselves well enough or our employees well enough, really. So, thank you. And we have a plaque for Mr. Ganey, if you would wait down there. I'll let you, Mr. Ganey, would you come forth? And would y'all come down and...
On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we want to present you this plaque that says, "In recognition of your heroic efforts and outstanding service to the public, your courageous dedication to the Walton County community is appreciated."
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next item we have is a request from Mr. Randy Wilkerson, who's the Director of Housing with the Escambia County Housing Finance Authority. And he has a resolution that he's requesting that you approve, that we continue a partnership between Walton County and the Escambia County Housing Finance Authority. Since, a program that we've shared and cooperated since about 1985. So I'll let Mr. Wilkerson speak to you.
First of all, I appreciate the opportunity to be before you today. Since 1985, the Escambia County Housing Finance Authority in Walton County, along with many other counties in the panhandle, have shared a partnership to bring homeownership opportunities to folks in our various communities. I think it's been a very successful partnership. Periodically, it's necessary for us to essentially renew the resolutions so that we continue the program on into the future. That's essentially what this resolution is doing. It's also adding the option to start a mortgage credit certificate program, which is another benefit to the home buyers after we put this resolution into place. And I would just basically say that I feel like we have spent a lot of effort over the years to help a lot of people. The Walton, Okaloosa region, as we call it, has originated about 12 million in mortgage loans. We provide $7,500 in down payment assistance that actually the authority funds, was not an obligation or liability of yours. And we'd just like to continue that partnership. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Do we have any questions? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any comments from the audience? All in favor, that we already voted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is regarding an appointment of some private sector members to the Career Source Okaloosa-Walton Board of Directors. According to the inter-local agreement between Walton and Okaloosa Counties and the bylaws of the Career Source Okaloosa County, each respective Board of County Commissioners appoint private sector members. If you look in your packet, there are two nominations. The first being a Juliette Malam from the Walton County area. She's the Walton County Area Manager of Gulf Power. And the second nomination is Odette Miranda, and she is the Human Resources Director for Sandestin Golf and Beach Resort.
Any questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Is your motion to approve both of them?
Yes.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request from Betty Webb with Riverway South, Appalachia, Chalk, Tahatchie. The request is for permission for Paddle Florida to utilize our Morrison Springs facility as a temporary campsite next year during the month of March for two nights. As you know, our ordinance currently prohibits camping in our county parks. So, Paddle Florida is conducting a campaign to bring awareness to the Chalk Tahatchie River and our ecotourism. And as part of that, they would like to do the camping at the facility. So, I guess our first matter of business would be to make that exception in some form to the ordinance and then to specifically allow their organization, which is a nonprofit organization, to use the facility in that manner.
And Commissioners, what I would suggest, if you would like to allow this type of activity, is that you direct staff to amend our parks ordinance to allow nonprofit groups like this group to camp in our parks with permission from the board.
Will you say that on an individual basis?
Yes, ma'am. We can do it on an individual basis with approval from the BCC.
Any other questions?
Yes. What part of the park were you wanting to try and use?
We actually have a map that should have been included in your package. It shows the location. One thing, I know you're wanting to get into some questions, but very quickly, as I said, my name is Betty Webb. I'm the project manager for Riverway South. And first of all, I just want to say thank you so much for being part of our organization. We have three members from Walton County that are part of our group. We have two of them with us today. Jason Cutshaw and Melinda Gates are on our board. And also Janice McLean with the City of Freeport. So first of all, let me just say thank you for participating with our group. We are a nine-county region, as should have been in the documentation that you received. So we do represent a large area and that's what we're trying to do, is promote the natural resources in the northwest Florida area. Did you have a copy of this map in your package? We do. Okay. Actually, the area that we're looking at is kind of behind the restrooms area here. It's that dash lined area. And they do limit participation to 30 members. So, the max you will have will be like 30 little pup tent type tents that they will be staying in. I'm not sure if they'll have some larger tents that, you know, they may double up in or not, but at this point, that's what we know about it. And it is a partnership that Riverway South is trying to do for 2018 as part of our continued efforts to promote the area.
I have some questions about this, but do we need to vote on the ordinance first?
If you'd like, you can direct me to bring back the ordinance. We can have that back within a month for approval. But if you'd like, you could go ahead and give Ms. Webb's organization the approval, contingent on changing the ordinance at a later date.
But then I have some questions.
Yeah.
Do you want us to go ahead and get into that discussion?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and make a motion and then, second, and then we'll have discussion.
Okay. I make the motion to amend the ordinance to allow nonprofits on an individual case-by-case basis, which will be approved by the BCC to use our, to camp in our public parks.
Right. Or I guess request staff to bring forward that change.
Yes, that's what I said.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Now, discussion? Do you have some questions, Commissioner Commander?
You know, I do. I guess my first question would be, is the public going to still use this park while these people are there? We're not going to shut off the park.
No.
Okay. And there's always housekeeping. Who's going to be responsible for keeping it clean, you know, and that sort of thing? Is your organization going to...
Yes, Riverway South is sponsoring this event for the Morrison Springs there, actually throughout the entire six-day visit from Paddle Florida. We will make sure it's maintained. Also, we do have insurance that will help cover any incident that happens, that type of thing. So we will be sponsoring the event. We'll take care of that. We will, if needed, I know you have a restroom facility there, but if needed, we'll be glad to bring extra portlets on site if we need to.
I think that's most of my questions.
Sorry. Okay. Any other questions? Any questions, comments from the audience on changing the ordinance, drafting changes to the ordinance? Yes, sir, come on up. State your name, spell your last name, please.
Frank Day, D-A-Y. Clearly, we need, or this organization needs to use the facility for camping. Why then, with the general public that's going to use this paddle route, not also need to use facilities like this Morrison Springs or other parks along this route? So I think we probably should take a look at expanding this to the general public use as well. Clearly, they've shown a need for overnight camping. And I'm quite sure other users of this trail system would also need that. I just think we need to take a look at that.
Frank, so you'll note, Frank, we are working on that process right now. We've got about a half a million dollars set aside to improve the paddle trail all the way down through Walton County. And part of that is to create these camping areas throughout the different stops we have. But we're in the process of it.
Thank you.
And part of what we can do with that is we'll be glad to work with you to help promote that through our organization.
You've got Melinda on there, so she knows all about it.
We do, Melinda and Jason are great representatives for you.
And I think that, if I'm right, Commissioner Chapman, that's one of the things we're trying to do and have been for a while, is to establish different stops along the Chalk Tahatchie, not necessarily Morrison Springs, because people are swimming and all that. But aren't we trying to establish places where people can pull up and they're going to spend the night in a tent?
That is part of the plan, Commissioner. And Cliff Nowitzki's been working on some designs. Melinda's obviously working on it too, to try and make it as enjoyable as possible. My question to you, ma'am, is, are y'all going to be, you bringing paddle boards and canoes in for these two days that you're here?
Yes, actually, what they'll do is, so it's lighter for them to travel, they actually rent from your local outfitters when they get here what they need for the event. So they will rent when they get here and transport them themselves to the different locations they'll be camping.
Okay, well, that has created a problem down there.
Okay?
Especially at Morrison's. We have all the kayakers and canoes coming in there and they normally launch on the backside of where the ramp is. And what they have done is they've taken up all the dock space or the loading ramp space. And when people try to either launch their motorboats or retrieve them, they won't move. And I am so concerned that somebody down there one day is going to take an accident with somebody down there. So, when you talk with your group, I would strongly urge you, if you're going to use the boat ramp to launch or whatever, be cognizant of the other fishermen and in March there's some hunting going on, that they provide access.
We'll make sure in our agreement with them that we have that specified and spelled out in the agreement. I certainly will. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Canoes are light enough that they can actually pull them out of the water and get them away from the dock, you know?
Yes, ma'am, that's what I envision as well.
Yeah.
But what they've been doing is they launch and then they go through about 30-minute safety thing for somebody that's never been on one and won't bother the yield to anybody else that's trying to get in or out of the water.
I understand. I understand the legitimate concern. We have a motion to draft the changes to the ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign. Now, would we like to do a motion to let them use the park, March the 10th through the 16th?
So moved, contingent upon the ordinance.
And all the things we discussed today.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Enjoy your say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is, we are requesting approval of the updated Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual. We've been working on this for quite some time and have revised and updated the manual. And you have it before you in your packet for your consideration and approval.
Have any questions, comments?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. I've been asking for it for four years and I'm glad to see it finally get here.
I'll second your motion, sir.
Motion second, any discussion?
Okay. Is Ellen May here? Is there anything she wants to say about this before we vote? No?
No.
Thank you for standing up, Ellen May.
Commissioner Nippers.
Someone has pointed out that on number chapter 25, and of course, long before my time, Commissioner Chapman, you don't need to mention that. The authority of commissioners in chapter 25, just so I understand, the hiring and the processes, would that conclude the level of what we did with Matt Carpenter at the planning level? That would be a board decision? Does that take that authority away by removing the word "the board"?
No, no, ma'am. That specifically addresses an individual commissioner on their own. So the board, as a board, can make decisions, but what that's intended to address is any individual commissioner acting on their own individual authority, making those kinds of decisions.
It means before those decisions can be made, it has to be a board. Well, personnel does the hiring, firing, but it would have to come up. I can't go out and get mad at somebody and just say, "You're gone, go to the house." So it really puts the attention back on the board to make the decisions. Which is... Thank you for the explanation. Uh-huh, thank you. Okay. Did we have a motion in second? Yes, we did. Motion second. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign.
Ellen May.
And just for the record, I said a quiet amount of time, I didn't say four years.
Yeah, I did.
Thank you, Commissioners, for that. The next item is a request for direction regarding an offer from Mr. Dixie Powell for the county to purchase approximately five acres from Powell Family Investments. This is two parcels that are adjacent to each other, that are located on the Walton County side of Lake Jackson. The owner of the properties approached me and made an offer to sell the property, if there was any interest by the board, to start the process of our acquisition and potentially look at this as some kind of park or preservation facility. So, your action today would be to, if you are interested in looking at this property further and considering it for purchase, would be to direct staff to start the process of purchasing the property.
Stan, can you clarify something? For me, the aerial that was just provided, it shows a space between the two parcels, but that doesn't show they're contiguous to each other.
Commissioner, it's kind of, I don't quite understand it, but there's two parcel numbers. And when you click on the first parcel number, it shows it in two separate pieces. Then when you click on the second parcel ID number, it shows that piece that separates those two.
Okay, I got it.
So why it was drawn that way, I don't know, but it is two separate parcel ID numbers, which would, Mr. Powell's email said it was approximately five acres. According to the property appraisers office, when I added the two parcels, it looks like it's more like 3.6 or 3.5 acres.
This is such a well-used park.
Yes.
At least when I go up to Florala. This would be wonderful, I'm sure, rec fees, preservative fees that we could...
Preservation, probably. Because one...
Because there is nothing really at Defeniac Springs that, our lake up there, we don't have much up in the north end. This would be fantastic.
And it's such a great place for skiing. I mean, there are a lot of folks that love to ski. And there's nowhere that I know of that you can ski around here. And to be able to ski, and so this lake is fabulous, so...
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. I'll second.
Motion second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, would the motion be to go forward with appraisals? Is that...
Yes.
Okay, go forward.
An environmental assessment. You have to...
Right. Okay. Is that, do you include that in your motion?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. A previous meeting, you voted and approved a surplus BCC number 4571. It was a 2003 Ford Taurus from the Planning Department. Today, we are requesting that we donate this particular vehicle to ARC of Walton County.
Can I make a motion that we do?
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second, and you have the comments? Comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign.
You want to say anything?
Yes. I'm Kim Lounas, Director of the ARC of Walton County, and thank you very much on behalf of all of our clients and our board. Thank you for your service.
And Kelly, your vehicle, the vehicle that you had, you were running people, your customers with your own vehicle, am I right?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Just... So thank you, thank you, Stan.
For accounting purposes, what's the value of the van, do you know?
It was a Ford Taurus. I don't have a value on it, but had 74,000 miles on it. And had some issues, but...
14 years old?
Yes, sir.
About $500.
$500, ball? No.
Not much.
And I can tell you, I went and spent a couple hours with Ms. Lounas a couple weeks ago and trying to get a better understanding of their organization and the services that they provide. I had my eyes open a little bit because they do quite a bit with, oh, not so much. Okay, the next item is, we're requesting direction on the highest and best use of the Old First National Bank Building. We currently use this facility as a record storage facility. If you recall, the Public Defender's Office was using the facility. The condition was such that we had to... The condition was such that we had to remove them out of there. So currently, we've been taking on the initiative of moving and centralizing all of our public records into one location. This being that location, we are currently at about seventy-five percent capacity in this facility. And the reason for the request today is we think that this facility, due to its location and its historical nature, there may be some interest in the private sector to purchase the facility and utilize it for something which would have more value. And so what we would request from you today is if there's any interest in seeing what the facility's worth, if there is some interest in the private sector and what the fair market value would be. And if that cost would offset and then some for a newer, more modern record storage facility to be constructed elsewhere. Or the other option could be one or two of the units that we just purchased in Freeport for record storage as well.
I'm sorry, that would be my only thing. I think we're getting the cart before the horse, although I think we need to start thinking about it. We better have a place for these records to go if we sell this building, you know, because I might buy it and say, I want you out next week. So let's have a good idea of where we're going to move these records, but at the same time looking at, you know, you're right, I think it's historic. You know, I could see a restaurant in there myself. You know, someone wanting to invest in downtown. And there's a lot of that going on right now. A lot of people are investing in downtown. But let's have some idea where we're going to move this stuff to.
Would you like for us to start, in properties that we own, that we surplus, we typically don't obtain an appraisal on those. However, we don't know what it's worth. So I would, if we were to move forward, if you have interest in moving forward with it, I would recommend that that probably be the first step.
I would, do we need a motion? I'd make that motion that we get an appraisal on this building?
And I'd also like to take, make sure that the people that are trying to improve our downtown Defuniac got, that we work with them. Because it takes a lot to rebuild a downtown. And if this building is of a historic nature, I'd like to take that in consideration maybe. Not the exact appraised value, but just something to consider for us.
Sure.
So what we would do is get an appraised value and then we would put it out for bid and see. And then if, you know, if the bids didn't come into our satisfaction, we didn't think we could take that money and build a facility, then we could, you know, we could refuse to sell at this time, so.
Stan, have you got any land that's been identified in the event this was a sale that we could build a storage facility?
We have. We've looked at a couple of locations. We have some property that is directly adjacent to the county attorney's office. We also have some property that is adjacent to Commissioner Commander's office.
Okay, well, as we discussed earlier about it, we're supposed to be digitizing all these records in there, or at least if they meet the retention to get rid of them. So I assume we're still working diligently towards getting that reduced. Because the last time I seen that building, I don't know how you found anything in there.
Well, and that would be part of our initiative is to hopefully get these things organized so that we can produce them in a timely manner. We are still digitizing. That's an ongoing process. Rick, would you come up and tell us where we're at with that process?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Sunday. Rick Wilson for the record, W I L S O N. We currently have scanned just about everything from our BCC Department, Public Works, purchasing. What we're still working on is Planning and Building Department because of the sensitive nature of their files, having to have them available. So, for example, next week, we're picking up forty boxes from Planning Department and continuing scanning. If I had to give you an estimate, we're probably halfway done with Planning Department, Building Department. Every other department is done. But we're scanning all their large format as well. So these records dating back to two thousand and beyond, we have the actual large format and the digital form that we can keep forever in preservation. And like Mr. Sunday said, our goal is to eliminate what we don't need to store. Because I think that we're probably fifty percent of what is over there now can be disposed of because, but the process that we have to go through that is just, it takes time and we're working on it with the county attorney's office right now.
Any other questions for Rick?
So what was your time estimate?
Ma'am?
What was your time estimate? That was a, I'm going to play attorney. You didn't answer the question.
I think he said it was ongoing.
It is ongoing, yes ma'am. We, you know, we. Well, we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year so far as what we've done, and I'm trying very diligently to stay within those numbers and we've stayed under them. We could be a little bit more aggressive. If you remember when the quote came in, it was almost two million dollars to scan everything that we have. So we're trying to work through that the best we can with our budget numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so direction. Do we have a motion in second? Is that clear?
Do you have an appraisal?
Appraisal first, and then we'll come back and talk about after that. So any comments from the audience?
Yeah.
We don't have a second?
Second.
We do have a second. Okay. Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign.
Thank you commissioners. Next item, on April the twelfth, during your BCC meeting, you directed staff to begin negotiations with the school board and the city of Defuniac regarding the pedestrian facility along John Baldwin Road and Walton Road and bring back an update. Mr. Buddy Wright with Public Works has met with those entities. And Buddy, if you would come up and provide the board an update.
Buddy Wright, W R I G H T, Walton County Public Works. Good morning commissioners. We did have an opportunity, myself, Melissa Thomason and Wilmer Stafford. We did have an opportunity to go meet with Superintendent Hughes, had a good discussion with him. Also had a meeting with the interim city manager Craig Drake from City of Defuniac. There has been a little movement. The school board has, you know, opened talks through their attorney, Mr. Holly with Sidney. We haven't finalized anything, but they do want to participate there. From what I understood, they're hamstrung a little bit. They can participate, but it has to border their actual property. So we're trying to work through some of that. And then I heard from Craig yesterday afternoon from the city. And basically, they don't have anything in this year's budget. Now, he said, you know, as the year goes on, if there's some excess funding, that they would certainly try to help us with it. And if not, they're willing to try to do something in next year's budget to try to get some money to help us with it. So those are updates on our meetings and we can continue those talks or, you know, take direction, any other direction the board would like us to do on it.
And I should be able to hear from Mr. Holly before the next board meeting. We've just been playing phone tag with each other. We've been busy.
And I think even, sorry, go ahead. And I think even if it's done internal, Smokey doing it at a timeframe, the fact that it's getting started is more important than getting the whole thing done all at once tomorrow. I think getting it started, the schools are, the schools aren't going anywhere, but they certainly need a sidewalk there and they deserve that safety because Walton Road and the other road that runs north-south are very good roads where people, I'm just afraid, all it takes is a little bit of texting to swerve. So there's a lot of children up and down that road. We've got We Care Park, so.
Is this the kind of project we could use to try to get a safe schools grant?
That has been discussed and I think there's, I think we're applying for one this year at a different location and the numbers are limited on how many you can apply for. I mean, obviously, that would be a, you know, something we could look at in the future, you know. Because we kind of broke that out into three phases, you know, the one from John Baldwin down to Helen McCall would be the first phase and then pick up a phase east and west.
And the fact that we do one phase is showing the safe school grants more willing to go forward. When I said through the TPO, that's what they explained. So like I said, if we could do it internal, Smokey doing it on, I guess on the weekends, when he works.
Yes, ma'am. And if, you know, directed by the board, we certainly do that. We'd have to schedule it and hit schedule.
I really appreciate Commissioner Nipper bringing this up. It's, my office is out there and it is really crowded. And I see kids so close to the side of the road, so sidewalks would really help. So thank you for bringing this up. Do we need, we don't need a motion. We just have direction to continue the dialogue and start the first phase or what do we, what's the direction?
That would be the direction of the board.
The least expensive is going to do the first phase in-house, even though it'll take longer. That'll be less money out of the sidewalk fund. We're getting it started. And it sounds like we've got a little bit of a promissory from the city of Defuniac. And then the safe sidewalk grants that we'll apply for. So I personally would like to see it move forward, but that's my suggestion.
On the phase one, is that on school property?
The phase one would, as you go up John Baldwin, it would border a portion of the school there. So that's where we would be in talk with them to, I think the number we were using was thirty thousand to build that, now that's us doing it in-house. To build that first leg and the school, you know, if we can work that out, that would be a place that they could participate from initial talks and we'll have to further those talks with them.
So you want to find out the amount that they're willing to put in and bring back, or do we want to go ahead and start a contingent on their amount?
If we wanted to wait until the next meeting, I should be able to hear from Mr. Holly by then and then we can know exactly how much the school district would be willing to participate.
What school gets out next week?
Wednesday, this week, tomorrow, tomorrow.
So, I mean, couldn't we start doing some of the prep work, design, it's something, engineer something to start moving this forward? I would, if that needs a motion, I'll make it. Let's do something to move forward rather than just sit, you know? Because school will be back in session, what in August.
Buddy, do we have good cost estimates on?
That cost estimate, put together, you know, that thirty thousand, I mean, we feel like we can do that in-house. Now, you know, scheduling is something we'll have to shift and move around certainly a lot, try to get it done as soon as possible. But, you know, Smokey's got a couple splash pads. I think he's through with the one at Choctaw and I think he's pulled the one up at Gaskin's. So I'd have to check, see what else he's on his schedule, but obviously we want to get to it as soon as we could. Be a good time to do it while school was out.
So we'll move forward with, we'll start to schedule it into the work program. And in the meantime, Sidney can meet with their, the school district's attorney and see what their contribution is going to be.
Do you have a motion to move forward? Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Thank you Buddy.
Thank you commissioners. The next item is request to approve award and authorize the chair to sign contract number zero, one, seven, zero, zero, five. That's for engineering services for East Point Washington Road realignment. That would be with Genesis in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. This project was budgeted using TIF funding in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. We're proposing to add ninety-one thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-seven cent in proportional fair share funds to complete the funding of the project. And so we would ask for your approval on this.
Motion to approve.
The motion at second?
Second.
Any questions from the commission? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, all in, oh, sorry. I was looking for hands. That's okay.
Hi, Carol Anzonia from Santa Rosa Beach. Just a quick question, will this include bicycle lanes?
Buddy, could you, do you know, could you come address that please?
There's not a, we hadn't had the design, this is the kickoff of the design. We have discussed that. As far as, as we move forward to design, you know, there's going to be some bridges or box covers, something to get over some areas. And we've asked them to consider that in the design, give us enough area to put a bike path across. So initially, yes, I would say we do want to incorporate. If bike path is not in the actual construction project, there would be room to put the bike path in at a later date. But we hadn't got that far into the design to even consider the bike path yet, but we can certainly do that if the board wishes.
Anytime we can consider bike paths, make sure that the land's there at least.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a way for the future, so.
And you guys are working on that master plan?
Yes, Chance and Melan and them's working on that with Planning and TDC.
Any other comments from the audience? We have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign.
Thank you commissioners. At your last meeting, you voted to present the city of Freeport with a proposal for the sewer issue that we're having at the Brandon Oaks subdivision. Part of that proposal was to competitively bid the sewer septic abandonment and the sewer connections for those fifty-six units. And so what we're requesting from you today is permission to develop the appropriate documents for bids or proposals and then to advertise those bids or proposals to abandon those fifty-six septic tanks and connect them to city sewer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments?
What did the city of Freeport say?
We don't know yet.
We have not heard back from the city of Freeport.
They're meeting it until Thursday of this week, so.
But because it's, you know, we have a letter from the health department saying that these septic tanks have failed. In this health situation, emergency situation, I feel like we should go ahead and move forward with the RFP and then, and then we'll deal with the money as we go, but I don't think.
Totally disagree, but I'm very interested, you know.
Right. Well, I don't think we can wait. I mean, when we're, when we're saying it's an emergency, we need to move forward. We can't sit and wait. You know, we have to decide to move forward and then we'll worry about the money.
I don't disagree with you, but I think money is important. I mean, how we pay for this is very important.
Commissioner Commander, it will take us some time to advertise the bids, so hopefully by the time we have those bids back, we'll have an answer from the city of Freeport.
Great, thank you. That's what I needed to know.
And this will give us a much better idea of, you know, what amount we're looking at.
I think we need to have an answer from Freeport. No, I'm sorry, should. I'm just saying I think we need, for me to make it, feel good about going forward, I think we need an answer from Freeport.
And we'll get one, but this is just to get the start process started. We're not committing anything yet.
Well, there was no commitment on the last letter they gave us. Is there any reason I say that? But there are meetings coming up like Chapman said. Any other, any questions from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign.
Thank you commissioners. The next item is request approval to advertise and hold a public hearing at nine o'clock on June sixth, two thousand seventeen at the South Walton Annex to bring forward eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars in debt service fund from the surplus bridge tax funds for the purchase of property north of the bay on the west side of three thirty-one identified as parcel ID number zero, four, two S nineteen, two, four, zero, 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 two, seven, zero, 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 zero.
Motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any other questions, comments, questions or comments from the audience?
Four P M?
I didn't hear, it says nine.
Okay, I'm sorry. At four o'clock rather than nine o'clock.
I'll modify my motion then for four P M on the sixth.
Modify the second.
Motion second at four o'clock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign.
And the next item is request approval to advertise and hold a budget workshop on July the sixth of this year at nine A M. in the Walton County Courthouse in Defuniac Springs.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign.
Thank you commissioners. That's all we have. Mr. Tusa.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm going to take the first couple items and then Brian Kellenberger will take the remaining items. Our first item, request to advertise for an RFP for marketing research services. This is for our research that we use for our marketing purposes. And some of the items that this includes are our economic impact studies, our quarterly visitor tracking studies and ADR studies. So there's been some discussion regarding this item at the last marketing committee meeting. As the contract expired in the middle of arch, there were concerns about some research being missed. And so I just wanted to assure the commissioners and the public that there is no research being missed. Zender Communications are an agency, advertising agency. In their scope of service, they can do research. So they are contracting with Downs in St. Germain to conduct the quarterly visitor tracking study and the ADR study. So everyone can rest assured that while this is late in getting this out, we are still getting the research done.
Any comments, questions from the commission? Any comments, questions from the audience? Mr. Bagby. State your name, spell your last name, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim Bagby, B A G.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jim Bagby, B A G B Y. Uh, he- here's the problem, all these things, I was gonna wait to address this at the end, but I'll, I'll do it now. Uh, the cost of doing it this way is twelve percent, okay? Zender adds on their administrative cost, every bill, everything they do, so they'll do anything you ask them to do, but it costs you an additional twelve percent because we didn't properly manage the contract with Downs and Saint Germain. So I would ask that you go back and you go ahead and go through the contracting process and quit paying the excess twelve percent. The other problem I have, every one of these, all eight of these agenda items, not a single one of them has been before your advisory council. You have an advisory council that vets these things and helps you make good decisions, and keeps track of these contracts, and keeps track of why you're paying an additional twelve percent on the, on top of the cost of the Downs-St. Germain, uh, contract cost. So I would ask that you direct the TDC to, to start using the advisory council as it, and the committees, as it was intended to be used, because you haven't done that on any of these agenda items, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, comment, any other comments from the commission?
I do have one comment, uh, commissioners, uh, that is not correct under twelve percent. Zender is not marking this up, they are passing it through at cost, so I just wanted to let everyone know that.
Do you have a motion? Do, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Um, any other comments? Come, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item, uh, update on South Walton Utility Company, uh, and for the Miramar Beach property they have, that's the spray fields, uh, the twenty-six acres they have, and we've talked to these folks in the past in regards to possibly a sports park being at this location. And, um, I've had a conversation with the general manager, and she has talked to her board, and they are open to doing some type of recreational park on that, um, site with some parking, uh, to accompany that park. So, uh, they actually have a board meeting this afternoon, so, um, if the board would like, I can go back and, um, give the general manager some direction, if we're interested or not, in moving forward and coming up maybe with some type of plan on, on a park there. Um, initially, the, uh, terms were twenty years, uh, twenty-year lease at ten thousand a year, so that's obviously two-hundred-thousand dollars. Um, I would perhaps like to see if we're gonna invest in the infrastructure on that site, to maybe see if we could do a thirty-year lease, so I just kinda wanna get a little bit of direction from the board and see if I can, uh, relay that on to the, uh, South Walton Utilities for their board meeting.
Have you talked to the, the TDC board about this?
I have not. We have a TDC meeting in two weeks, and I was planning on bringing it up then.
Yes, would you, if you would just make sure that you vet it with them and get their ideas, cause, uh, and then, and then before you bring it back to us, that would be great.
Okay, yes ma'am, I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Um, and then, what I'm gonna do real quick is, um, I have some updates that I want to do, and then I'll let Brian jump up and do, uh, the next items, but, quick, um, rundown on some updates. So, um, this evening, we're having a, uh, workshop on the regional beach access in Dune Allen, that's the property we bought last fall, so that'll be at the TDC office this evening from five-thirty to seven-thirty, so obviously we invite the public to come and give us input on that property. Um, and then, in addition to that, um, I think everybody knows what's going on with Visit Florida, it's in a tough spot right now, and we're kinda waiting to see what the governor's gonna do with that, um, but, right now, we're looking at a sixty-seven percent decrease in Visit Florida funding from, uh, seventy-six million to twenty-five million dollars. So, I've had some conversations with some of our industry partners, and they're obviously concerned about this, because quite a few of our industry partners here partake in those co-op marketing opportunities that Visit Florida, uh, present to our, um, folks here. So, what I'd like to do is, and I will address this at the TDC meeting as well in a couple of weeks, but I'd like to hold some workshops with the, uh, with our industry partners and see how this is gonna affect them, and see how we could possibly help them moving forward. So anyway, I just wanted to give you a little heads up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, any questions, Ray?
Any questions? Brian?
Okay, great.
I see our season's got off to a good start. When I call you on the weekend, that means that visitors are here.
Yes, ma'am.
But you know what, I appreciate, y'all are always accessible, you know, even though you're off, you answer your phone, and I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am, you call at two o'clock, we'll answer the phone.
No, I won't be calling it too unless it's a real emergency. Go ahead.
Good morning, uh, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations, appreciate your time this morning. Few items of business, uh, the first four items are task orders, and this is for design permit and construction administration for what I call facelifts to our neighborhood in regional beach access boardwalks. So item number twenty-five is request to approve task order seventeen dash zero-zero-five with polyengineering for fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and thirty-four cents, and this is for, uh, neighborhood beach accesses on Scenic Golf Drive and in Dune Allen area.
And, and I believe, I was on the TDC board when this was vetted with us, so I, this has been before the board?
Yes, ma'am, it has been before the board, before the TDC, it's been approved in the budgets, uh, by both bodies.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion?
So moved.
Motion second?
Second.
Motion second. Any other comments, comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Next one is, uh, request to approve task order seventeen dash zero-zero-six with polyengineering for sixty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-seven dollars and forty-six cents, and this is for neighborhood beach accesses in the Blue Mountain Beach and Dune Allen area.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, any other comments, comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Next item is, uh, request to approve task order seventeen dash zero-zero-seven with polyengineering for the amount of fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and thirty-four cents, and this is for neighborhood beach accesses in the Sea Grove and Eastern Lake area.
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in, any comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Last task order is, uh, to approve seventeen dash zero-zero-eight, uh, for design permitting and construction services at, uh, three of our regional beach accesses, and that would be Miramar Beach Access, Blue Mountain Beach Access, and Van Ness Butler. All of those are regional beach accesses, and it's for the same, uh, services, uh, what I call the facelift, which is new deck boards, new handrails, uh, design permitting and construction RFP services.
How often do they need a facelift?
Well, the last time these were done were after, um, Hurricane Dennis in two thousand and six, so we get about ten years out of them.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion second. Um, any comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Okay, thank you. Next item is, uh, request to award, uh, RFP seventeen dash zero-one-zero to the top-ranked firm Zeke Outdoors, and this is for the, um, contract to maintain our multi-use path along, uh, Scenic Thirty-A, uh, Scenic Golf Drive, and the feeder roads that run north and south as listed in the RFP. Uh, Zeke was a top-ranked firm out of three, uh, qualified respondents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Could I comment, please?
Sure.
Um, in twenty-fourteen, we had a process where, um, uh, a bid came up on another project, and, um, Harper Incorporated, for example, was, um, denied, cause they hadn't been in business three years. Well, to me, this kind of applies here, but I'm told by legal that not necessarily, so anyway. But I do wanna make one comment. I was in a meeting this weekend, all day, Saturday and Sunday, with Mr. Williams over there, um, about how we can make Walton County better, how we can bring our children back to this county to work and raise their children. And we have, um, people that have gone to college, even though they did go to Auburn, um, and, and, and come back, and, um, you know, have a business here, and we're kinda looking at, at those that were born and raised, but, but you're not good enough. So, I mean, that's my personal views, um, I am concerned that next time we handle this differently, um, that we have a different process to go through, um, so.
Senator Commander, I guess just to briefly address some of your concerns, I think Melissa and I both had conversations about this and came up with some ideas of how we could clean up our purchasing manual to a certain extent.
I think it very much needs to-
And we do have a local preference, um, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, and we can look at that and see if there's a way we can make that stronger.
Right, absolutely.
But theoretically, you're saying all three of these were local, so, um, you know, but, yeah, I don't know, but I think we need to take a real strong look at, do we do a RFP, or do we do a-
Invitation to bed.
Something, invitation to bed, something, next time, which would make it, I think, um, more palatable.
Alright, any comments from the audience? Yes, Ms., Ms. Harris?
Suzanne Harris, representing Edgewater Beach Condominiums, I am the president of the association. Do I need to spell my name?
No, ma'am.
I wouldn't think so. This was never brought up in front of the TDC council. I really think that when none of the bed tax collectors who collect this money that y'all are voting to spend know anything about something, I think it should be brought up to them, and they have a meeting pretty soon before it comes to y'all to approve. I also think when I send in a public records request to Jay and just say, "How many empty positions do we have at the TDC now?", it shouldn't take me three weeks to get it back, because Mr. Tulsa sends it to the county attorney for her to answer, and I can't get it back. I also asked for a copy of Zender's bill. I got a summary of Zender's bill, but Zender's bill I've seen before, it's lots of pages, and that's not what I got. We're having contracts expire that do our marketing research, and the, the, none of the bed taxers, collectors are even told that, so today I hear that in March, our contract expired, that was one of the questions I sent on my public records request to Mr. Tulsa, who he never answered. So now, our contract expired in March, we're now in the middle of summer, and we have no marketing research for us to go by? That's inexcusable, and if Zender's doing it, I have a lot of emails back and forth to Zender. Zender, if they're doing it, whether they're marketing it up or not, if that's such a great idea, how did we just let a contract expire and not know it? Now, on this, I really and truly think the bed tax collectors deserve to be told that their money is gonna be spent on this before y'all vote on it. I don't think things should just be thought up at the TDC, and then it should be brought to y'all without being told upfront, none of your bed tax collectors know anything about this, but we want you to approve it. That's why you have a bed tax collector council, that's why you have meetings, so bed tax collectors like me can attend and know where my money's being spent.
Sidney, did you wanna?
Yeah, just briefly, um, to address Ms. Harris's concern about this not going to the TDC council, this is a budgeted item, this is a service we've been providing since before two thousand fourteen, um, so it was in the TDC budget, that budget would have been looked at by the TDC council.
You're saying it's already been looked at by the-
Right.
As part of the budgeting process.
And by law, we have to go, we, we have certain, uh, certain criteria when we, we get bids, we have to usually go with the lowest bidder unless there's some reason, other outstanding reason.
We wouldn't be getting a bid except that contract expired.
Oh, we would have to get a bid, yes, ma'am, what's the contract?
Yeah, when it expires, it didn't have an option in it?
I don't believe so, we, we-
We were, we were at the end of the three-year contract that, uh, was originally two years and a one-year extension. The reason the bid was delayed slightly is because we took an opportunity to include the other side of Highway Thirty-A and the other side of the feeder roads in order to, uh, realize some economy of scale on maintaining the opposite side of the road. The side of the multi-use path looks great, the other side not so great, now, by doing this, we actually saved about sixty grand on the multi-use side of the, uh, side of the road, uh, and we also realized economy of scale on the other side of the road.
Mr. Bagby?
So, a couple of questions, and these may be Melissa questions. The, uh, first question, Madam Chair, Jim Bagby, I'm sorry, B A G B Y. The, uh, does this, which of the three options, because we, nobody could pull up, uh, the information on the website yesterday, other than the three bids, so which of the three options did we choose?
On the contractor sub-down, Zeke?
No, no, the three options, there was one where we maintained, and this goes to, uh, the county attorney's point, where we maintained the current standard, the RFP that was originally approved by the TDC, one where we expanded it among feeder roads, and then one where we expanded it among feeder roads and the opposite side, the right of, the county right-of-way.
We are requesting the, the base bid with both options, Public Works would be funding the two options.
Okay, and what would be the administrative, uh, payback?
What do you mean by administrative payback?
Well, this interesting concept that the county came up with a few years ago, to take administrative costs from the TDC for the services it provides. If the TDC is actually doing this contract, then there should be an administrative cost. There's actually not a cost savings, as, uh, Brian would have you believe, because the TDC, Brian and his guys, would be overseeing the work that the county used to do, and the county would not be wearing out the mowers, they wouldn't be wearing out the trucks and the trailers that hauled the mowers, and it ought, they wouldn't be paying the people. So, it's not just a payback to costs, there's, you, you and I have had many conversations on administrative overhead.
And that's one thing that I'm hoping to bring back to the board in the next month, in the next few weeks, I've got the draft with, to legal yesterday for their review, and then it'll go to y'all. Um, one of the recommendations by the auditor general was to get a policy for those indirect costs, which we've drawn, which we've drawn up. Um, looking at what other counties do, we want to go out every three years to update that, because it's not perfect. When this was done, it was done in two thousand fourteen, on two thousand fourteen numbers, where the TDC is, obviously, do, they're doing per, property purchases that we've all been, that you've all been involved in. Those costs are not being captured in that indirect cost allocation. So when Mr. Bagby brings up, yes, TDC would be looking at their portion of it, I would still, I would still say Public Works is going to be reviewing their portion of whatever is approved, they're still gonna have to sign off on that invoice, so I don't quite see where TDC is just taking over something that Public Works would be responsible for. But as I said, we're going out next year for another, for another study, and we'll update our numbers then. Does that answer your question?
Well, sort of, except it's not two separate contracts, so Public Works is not contractually obligated to do that, and so the TDC actually is contractually obligate, if they-
Well, it's the, it's all the board, it's the board's contract.
Well, and there's the problem, this, as currently constructed, this is an improper use of TDT, and as a bed tax collector, it's my responsibility to make sure that you understand that this is an improper use of TDT, until there is that administrative, until the administrative cost, it, it goes both ways, okay? You can't, you can't have the TDC paying the administrative overhead and not have the county paying the, because you're using TDT to pay for work in the county right-of-way.
No, no.
No, no, no.
You are on the administrative overhead cost.
Public Works is paying. Public Works would be paying that.
And the administrative overhead cost would be?
Well-
Public Works, I, I, I know when they're down there.
Where's the county's administrative cost in all the property purchases that have come up?
It's, they own the property, they got the payback from the owning the property.
Melissa, would you meet with Mr. Bagby and, and y'all, uh, talk about this at another
time, please?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. And is, there's no reason that we're not getting the public records in a, in a timely way, and we need to make sure that all records are, are paid up, and, and that we're keeping that flowing, so, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, we're working hard on that.
Thank you, yes, sir, way back in the back.
As this comes up, Ms., Madam Chairman, don't all public records requests have to go to legal?
They do if they, um, involve an email search, which Ms. Harris's did, or involve multiple departments, so they would come to our office.
And make sure.
And then all funds that are owed, they come to your office as well, that's the proper process?
Uh, individual departments can collect funds, um, but they would report that to our office, we try to keep track of that. We try to keep track of that.
Okay, thank you, yes, sir. State your name and spell your last name, please.
Craig Houston, H-U-S-T-O-N. Just kind of, you had mentioned earlier that it is low bid. 2014, it was kind of the middle bid, and just kind of checking if there, you said, I think it was a point system? And trying to see what the point system was, kind of tying in with, I know, all three vendors. As Sarah Commander had mentioned, we're all local, just kind of, if we wouldn't get any little?
So it's my understanding, and Melissa, please correct me, but I think Zeke was the lowest bid price-wise, and they were the most qualified by the selection committee.
Okay.
Highest qualified.
Is there any way to get the points, how the points were broken out?
Sure.
I mean, like Mr. Bagby mentioned, the pricing was the only thing that we could access on the county website.
Yeah, that would be a public records request. We have it now, we, we'll get it to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so any other comments? Seeing none, did we have a motion? We have a motion and a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
No.
Forward or backward.
Thank you very much. Next item is a request to approve the purchase of seven coastal dune lake signs in an amount not to exceed $10,000. This is the last phase of a project we started back in 2014, which is to put informational kiosk signs at the coastal dune lakes that are on the multi-use path. This project has been approved by Destination Improvement Committee, TDC, Coastal Dune Lake Advisory Board, and now requesting your approval. You have a package in your book that shows the signs. It follows our typical format of theme and contact, content that is unique to each individual lake, and they will be built with the same design style.
$10,000?
There's seven of them. They're aluminum plates, they're bent with a vertical front bottom part, slightly angled view area, and then a vertical top part. Quarter-inch aluminum plate painted, we paint them brown to match State Park brown colors, and then the vinyl graphics to go on top of them. They're approximately 1,200 bucks a piece, is the last five we've bought.
Brian, did you discuss this with the TDC board?
Yes, ma'am, these have been approved by all the previous advisory boards for theme and content, and it was a budget item that's been carried over since 2014.
Any other questions? That's your pleasure.
I make a move, we approve this.
The motion? Motion, second. Any comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am, come on up, Ms. Harris.
Previous TDC boards, everybody keeps saying this was approved by previous TDC boards. How about the TDC board that is active now? Do they know this?
Yes, ma'am.
They do? It was approved by this TDC board that's current now, in office now? At December 6th, okay, I'll check that.
Would you have that meeting or the meeting prior to that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call for vote, all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Moving into the public hearing on medical marijuana.
Yes, ma'am. As the board will remember, you directed staff to come up with some location criteria for medical marijuana dispensaries. The ordinance that you have in front of you, it would limit the total number of dispensaries in the county to two.
Shouldn't we open up?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Motion to open up the public hearing?
Thank you.
But moved.
Motion and second to open the public hearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Commissioner Chapman. So as I was saying, the board directed staff to come up with location criteria, and also to limit the number of dispensaries to two in the county, one north of the bay and one south of the bay. Because we're limiting the number of dispensaries, we've got to come up with some sort of selection criteria. So the ordinance establishes a committee to look at the selection criteria. Those selection criteria are on pages 10 through 11 of the ordinance. The location criteria for the dispensaries, the board directed staff to have that mirror what's in our alcohol ordinance, which is actually, it's 1,320 feet from any school or church. And then the board also added any daycare facility or county park. So we added that in as well, so at 1,320 feet from those facilities. The ordinance also would prohibit signage that would be cartoonish in nature, that would appeal to children. So I think with all of these criteria and the ordinance, we've addressed all the concerns from our workshop that we had on this matter.
Any comments from the commission? Any comments from the audience on the ordinance? State your, come up and state your name and spell your last name, please.
Good evening, my name's James Hurley, H-U-R-L-E-Y. I'm a resident of Walton County, a member of the Walton County Prevention Coalition, and a professional law enforcement officer here in Florida. First, I'd like to thank the commission, what the work they have done on the program so far, the ordinance. There's a couple issues after reviewing the ordinance that I, that I see that I'd like to have changed or added or at least addressed. Page 13 of the ordinance, section 11. Upon renewal of the certificate, how are we going to ensure the operator has not committed any of the other disqualifying offenses since the first obtaining the certificate? I think a simple solution to that would be conduct another type of background check, ensure that they have not committed any of the crimes that would disqualify them since first obtaining it. Page 14, section 14 subsection 2 of the ordinance, I would like to see the youth serving, youth-serving businesses and recreational centers added along with the school facilities and daycares and stuff like that. And for example, that'd be Boys and Girls Clubs, Boys and Girl Scouts Hut, the ARC, types of businesses like that that promote our youth and bring, bring things to them. Page 15, section 16 subsection 8. Developing curriculum and lesson plans needs to be left to healthcare professionals and our school nurses programs. I think by allowing the industry to develop the curriculum, it would just interject bias into the material. You can look what the alcohol industry has done. It's, it's no longer do not drink, it's drink responsibly. They've interjected their bias into it there. And I would like to see the industry maybe fund a, fund these programs through a trust fund to provide some funding for, for schools to develop that curriculum. Page 15, section 17, also covered in section 16 subsection 7. Items need to be added, the operator cannot give out free promotional items such as stickers, t-shirts, coasters, party favors. Working spring break at Pan Amal City Beach, the beach gets littered with Four Loko material, t-shirts, hats, glasses, lighted batons, stickers. There's stickers over every elevator in every condo, gas pumps, businesses, it just gets littered. So when you start providing these free promotional items to promote your businesses, that, that gets them away from advertising outside their business, but it still gives promotional items that, that advertises for them. And nowhere in the ordinance does it state any requirements for age limits for employees of these type of businesses. I think there needs to be a minimum age requirement for the employees of these type of businesses. So, thank you for your time, thank you for what you have done, and I appreciate your hard work.
I very much agree with what you need to add. And I understand, I did reach out, and it was kind of the chicken before the egg. I, this ordinance had to be written?
I understand.
Before I could get input, which I find odd. So thank you very much for your input.
Yes, I, like I said, I appreciate everything you do, and anything I can do, reach out to me.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Anyone else? Sydney, could you address some of that?
Yeah, so I think some of Mr. Hurley's concerns, these medical marijuana dispensaries are obviously the criteria for who can establish one is set by the state of Florida, and we don't have any control of that whatsoever. I, I do think probably the age requirements for employees is something that would be addressed with the State Department of Health rules. So if, if we're in any kind of conflict with that, we would be preempted by the state. We can easily add the requirements about the youth-serving facilities on page 14 that Mr. Hurley suggested, and I think that's probably a good idea. But I do think whenever it gets down to the operation of the business, that would be more handled by Department of Health rules regulating the business.
But the renewal verifying the background check for the renewal, I think, is important.
Okay.
And we can be more restrict, as I understand, we can be more restrictive than the state?
We can be more restrictive as long as we're not in conflict with what the state rules are. So I guess I might need a summary of what we want to include from Mr. Hurley's recommendations if we want to make those changes.
Do we have any idea when the Health Department is going to give us those guidelines?
No, sir, no, those haven't been clear. It's my understanding, so there was a statute that was adopted in 2015, the Compassionate Use Act, and the Department of Health did establish some guidelines to implement that statute. So it's my understanding, in the absence of any legislative action from the legislature this past session, that the rules for Amendment 1 will be similar to those that were adopted for the Compassionate Use Act. And those limit the number of growing facilities. It regulates patients being on a list, doctors who can dispense, as well as some other criteria for the businesses.
Well, I'm, I'm real disappointed in the state for not, for dropping the ball on this. And, and I mean, all of us counties are sitting out here waiting for some type of guidelines to, to do this so that we don't have to go back and do, change everything.
Right.
And, you know, they just totally ignored us.
Right, and I, I think the important thing is, is we get something on the books. We can always make tweaks to this, but we, we've got to have some sort of criteria for where these are going to be located. Otherwise, we could have them located anywhere and any number.
Right, and then another one that Mr. Hurley said when I went to that summit is Colorado did a great job of stating what they did well and what they did wrong, and what they didn't want to see other states do. And one of them was, there was funding, and it was partially on the back of the dispensaries, and they're, they've got growers, there's, there's other aspects to it. But the education was on, just like Mr. Hurley said, it wasn't, it wasn't the dispensaries during the teaching, it was our educational system. And there's a lot of information out there that we're, that we're doing the teaching, and that that youth program, they said, was paramount in Colorado. So I'll keep that in the back of our minds.
So I, I know we, our moratorium is, is coming to the end of its cycle. So would the board want to continue this for two weeks for me to make those changes that Mr. Hurley suggested? Or would you want to consider adopting what we have, and then maybe asking, having me come back with some of the changes that Mr. Hurley suggested? What I don't want to do is, I guess, wait so long that we have a gap between our moratorium and the new ordinance.
When is the moratorium up?
Or if we can clearly, I think it was actually up this weekend.
So we need to get something in place.
If we could clearly state what Mr. Hurley's suggestions were, we can make those changes, but we've got to make it clear in our, our motion to approve the ordinance.
I would be more comfortable, let's go on ahead and make, accepting what we have, and then giving you time to bring those back to us so that we can do it the right way.
And I'd be more than happy to meet with Mr. Hurley.
Yes, I would suggest that. I, I like his suggestions.
Yes, sir.
But I don't want, my understanding is, we're kind of in a wild west. If, if we don't have something on paper, then, you know, people can put stuff where they want and do what they want. So I, I suggest we get something on the books today.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
You have to vote outside the public hearing.
That's fine.
Okay, do I have anybody else that would like to comment? And if, you know, if you don't, not comfortable, come to the podium. If you would get with Sydney and, and come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Ben Barton, pastor of Life Changers Church here in Defuniac Springs. And first of all, I'd like to give honor what honors do. I appreciate every, your service, and I honor the seat that you're in. As this was made known aware to me, I began to pray and begin to ask God what I may do to help protect our community. And we have a seal there called preservation, and we need to preserve the innocent. I'm really concerned about the innocent people that is going to be harmed, the innocent children and families that's probably going to be destroyed because of this. So to let you know, I'm against the ordinance all the way. I'd like to read a scripture, a couple of them, matter of fact. And the Lord gave it to me called Preserve the Innocent. It says, "God," Psalms 82 verses 1 through 4. "God standeth in the congregation of the mighty," which means God is among us today. "We pledge allegiance to a flag, one nation, under God. He judgeth among the gods, 'How long will you judge unjustly? And accept the persons of the wicked, Sila? Defend the poor and the fatherless; do justice to the afflicted and needy; deliver the poor and needy; rid them out of the hand of the wicked.'" So I would like to just share with everyone here today that this is a very important ordinance and a decision we're about to make. But I'm concerned of the innocent people. I deal with a lot of people, minister in the prisons, the jails, and have a lot of people come for counseling. Matter of fact, I pastor a church on the east side of Defuniac Springs, which is, there's some, a lot of trouble that way. But Jesus has come for the sick, not for the well. We're constantly having to deal with people on drugs, drinking, it destroys families. So I believe that the old saying, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." So I'm here today just strictly to let heaven and earth record today, I oppose the ordinance completely. Also, I'm here for the innocent lives that will be destroyed. Proverbs 6, 16 through 19 says, "These six things does the Lord hate; seven are an abomination to him: a proud look, a lying tongue, hands that shed innocent blood, a heart that devises wicked imaginations, feet that are swift running to mischief, a false witness that speaketh lies, and he that soweth discord among the brother." Right there in that scripture, it says, "Hands that shed innocent blood." "There will be no blood on my hands for the innocent lives that are destroyed." In closing, in God's eyes, if you're not against this, then you are for it. And the blood of the innocent will be on your hands. Thank you, God bless you.
Ben?
Yes, sir.
You do realize that this, this is an ordinance to control the sale of medical marijuana?
Correct.
Which is an amendment to the Constitution?
Correct.
Voted on with a high percentage in Walton County. This is not something the county chose to do.
Correct.
This is something that the county has to do.
Yes.
By law, or we all go to jail.
Correct.
And this ordinance is to, to control where they are, to try to keep them as restrictive as possible. It's not that any of us up here necessarily agree with the amendment.
Correct.
But by law, we have to do something. If we don't, if we don't have restrictions on this, people can come in here and put them anywhere they want, put as many as they want. We're doing, what we're trying to do is do our job to restrict the access to children.
Correct.
And to make sure that it's medical marijuana that is being used for. It's not that I necessarily agree with the amendment.
Yes, sir.
But if we don't form some restrictions on it, it's really going to be, it's going to be a lot worse than it is in Colorado.
Absolutely. Well, I'm, yeah, I'm not just speaking directly to you, I'm speaking to everybody to go on record that if we do not do our best in our heart to oppose whatever we can to the just, then there will be innocent lives, and that will be a warning, that innocent lives will be destroyed. When they went to crucify Jesus, Pontius Pilate turned him loose, and the people said this word, "Let his blood be upon us and our children." To this day, there's many bloodshed due to that one statement. So I'm just recording the record, heaven and earth today, that let everybody know that if you think of money, gain, and personal power over innocent lives, God is the judge, not me. Any questions? Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, come up, please. State your name and spell your last name.
Thank you, commissioners. Carol Enzonia from Santa Rosa Beach, Z-O-N-I-A. I'm an emergency physician, and I've spoken to you before about the medical marijuana issue. I would like to also thank you for your hard work on this, and appreciate what you've done so far. I just want to say for the record that medical marijuana is to ease the pain and suffering of afflicted individuals. And just to reassure the public that this is not legalizing marijuana, this is providing a path for easing the pain and suffering of afflicted individuals under the control of physicians. So I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. I think that 71% of Floridians voted for this. We understand how important this is, and especially in Walton County, I appreciate what you guys are doing to help those people. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. White, Pastor White? Yeah, and, and you know, I just, I just would be remiss if I didn't say, when I read the Colorado reports and I hear of the increase in crime, and I hear of the robberies, you see, these dispensaries have to deal in cash, so there's been many robberies. I, I just hope, we've been restrictive enough about where we're putting them, I mean?
I know that we've done the best we can.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know, it's, it's a hard thing. So go ahead, Ms. Pastor White, thank you.
I'm RW White, citizen of Walton County for the last 60, almost seven years. For the last 40 years, I've been dealing with suffering humanity as a born-again Christian and a minister of the gospel. And we have, y'all been dropped, y'all have a hot potato dropped in your lap to try to deal with. You've got a very difficult situation here this morning, and you've got the- You've got a very difficult situation here this morning if you've got to make a decision on how to regulate it. Drugs is an all-time high as we know in this county and everywhere across this nation. It's one of the most, probably the most serious problem we have with dealing with humanity from the ministerial standpoint. My heart goes out to all suffering, pain, people who have pain. I personally have lost my youngest brother and my youngest sister to my siblings to cancer, who both died a very painful, excruciating painful death. I'm for people who are suffering to get relief any legal way they possibly can. But I'm at the same time, you know, y'all, it's already been passed as Mr. Anderson has talked about. I just want to encourage you as county commissioners to put as much serious thought, and I know you will, into this and make it as difficult for it not to get out of hand in Walton County. Now, it's, I, I know of Walton County residents now living in Colorado whose lives have already been destroyed. Personally, I know that for a fact because of this rule. Not that they had medical problems, but they had got access to it very easily through these shops on the street. So, it can become very, very rampant in Walton County and all across our state if we do not put the absolute tightest restrictions in your ordinance. The citizens of Walton County spoke, as you know, as you said. Trouble with a democracy sometime, most of the time is, the democracy's vote isn't always right. It isn't the best moral thing to have. But I personally know the pain and suffering, as I said, in my immediate family. But at the same time, please, preferably with buts prayer and much consideration, your decision on this ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sure.
I was going to ask her a question, it just left my mind. But, but doesn't, for example, we set up a dispensary here in North Lawn, or any dispensary, aren't they going to be responsible either to the state health department or somebody to say, hey, you know, we had this many prescriptions we filled?
Yes, ma'am.
So.
It's, it's very heavily regulated by the state that who can have a dispensary.
And the state would do that, not us, right?
Please understand, there's two words, there's medical and recreational.
Yes.
We are discussing medical in the state of Florida, not recreational like they have in Colorado. Medical marijuana. And we can also put in opiate dependency, another drug. That's what we're trying to do, is reduce opiate dependencies. Medical marijuana only. Anyone else before we close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
After hearing the comments that I did today, I just, you know, I want, I want to go ahead and adopt this today because we don't want an open time that anybody and everybody can come in. But I also want to really examine, have we done, you know, our due diligence in making this as hard as we can? You know, we have mail order, you know, do we want to consider one instead of two? I, I know we, you know, after reading the report, I'm changing my attitude of, you know, this is very, very serious and we need to be as strict as we can. You know, I know we can't put this at bunker, but we, but we could put it, you know, in Freeport. We could put it in an industrial park. I mean, these are just ideas that I'd like you to consider and maybe we can have more dialogue individually. But I do, I agree with Pastor White, we need to make this, you know, as, because there is mail order and people can get it through mail order, so we can't, so any other comments before we? So, does someone want to attempt a motion on the changes that we've heard today?
I make a motion that we go ahead and accept this ordinance and that Sydney get with Mr. Hurley to go over, and, and go over those changes and bring them back to that. But I think we need to accept this ordinance, so we will have some restrictions today because the moratorium has run out.
A motion and a second, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. So, we will be getting this back with some stricter dialogue, hopefully.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Hurley?
Thank you. Yes, we, we need to take a five-minute break now. Five minutes, please. Everyone would take your seats, we're ready to, to convene, please. My five minutes stretched to ten or fifteen, I'm afraid. We're so glad to have Sydney here as our interim county attorney.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Thank you. So, I think we're on item number thirty-three on the agenda. This is a request to approve and authorize the chairwoman to sign a purchase agreement for property. This is the Bayfront property that's adjacent to the 331 Bridge.
Motion to approve.
Any, any other comments? Comments from the audience? Yes, sir, come on up.
Frank Day, D A Y. Glad to see that you're purchasing this property and I don't know exactly where this property is other than from the brief description here. But I've had some complaints from friends in the Freeport area that the 331 Bridge Park development included, I think, five or six boat ramps, all on the south side, and there were none on the north side. So, if that could be placed on one of the considerations for uses of this particular property, I think you'd please quite a few people in the Freeport.
And we are working on that.
Frank, just to let you know, it's in my district. That piece of parcel right there includes the beach, the beachy part of it, okay? Just directly north of it, and I know, I don't know if you can see what I'm looking at.
Right there on the computer.
Right there, Frank, to your right.
Yes.
You see, just north of it, there's like a rectangular shape there, right?
Does that include that old boat basin?
Yes, no, it, no, it does not. We are working to get parcels three, A, B, C, and D, I believe, which is the area on the other side of where that old boat ramp area is. And our intent would be to improve it enough that we could become a boat launch on the north side of the bay.
Great, great. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, thanks. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All ayes.
The next item on the agenda is a request to approve and authorize the chairwoman to sign the closing documents for the purchase of fifty-five acres adjacent to the Walton County Jail. And the closing would be held later this week.
Motion to approve. A motion, we have a second?
Second.
Question?
Yes, sir.
For this, where's it coming from?
That, that might be a question for Melissa.
Melissa, you in here? My understanding, they were going to take it out of some of those funds that were coming from Escambia County.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, they're, they're paying for it out of that, correct?
They'll pay for it out of that, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
The next item on the agenda is a request for direction regarding an amendment to a settlement agreement in Black Creek of Northwest Florida Inc. versus Walton County. This is a case from 2002 that was settled in 2004. A representative from Black Creek is here along with Ms. Minshew, his attorney. I received a letter, well, actually, Mr. Davis received a letter while he was still here about a month ago from Ms. Minshew. And she's requesting on behalf of her client that they be allowed to continue a non-conforming use of excavating and mining the land. The, the agreement detailed allowing the nonconformity from 2004 to 2009 for the excavation of the property. Due to the economic downturn, largely due to the economic downturn, they weren't able to complete the process of the excavation. There is one outstanding issue with the settlement agreement. Walton County was supposed to sponsor a large-scale amendment to change a portion of the property to a business park, I believe. MAC has researched that, because the records are so old, we can't tell exactly what happened. What I would suggest to the board is, whether or not you accept Black Creek's proposal, that you would direct staff to work with them to make sure that that land use change does get effectuated as required by the settlement agreement, and we certainly can do that.
Do we have any questions? Would y'all like to do a presentation, or?
I don't want to take up much of your time, commissioners, good to see you all again. Lisa Minshew, on behalf of Black Creek. This is a development that was underway and the permits had been obtained, development order had been obtained, and then we had the economy and the BP oil spill, and it's been on hold. And the Huff brothers here, who are with me, are the owners. They just want to be able to finish up, finishing those lakes, which is going to require them to excavate some of that dirt to finish the lakes so they can build the subdivision. This was a part of a federal lawsuit that was settled by the commission. And as Ms. Nois said, some of the things that are in the settlement agreement may not have been completed by the county side, too. So, we would just like to extend it for five years so that we can finish up the subdivision and move on with that property.
Ms. Minshew?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're supposed to go to 2009 on the original agreement, correct? And I understand that we had that period of downturn.
Yes, sir.
But it's just 2017 and you're wanting to approve it another five years to 2023, I guess it is. I don't understand why, what was going on from, say, 2011 to today.
Right. I think it's just a, a sign of the economy. It took, it takes development, residential development, a little while to recover from both the economy, the hurricanes and the BP oil spill. I don't know what your experience is, mine, my clients that are doing development work, it took a while for things to get rolling again. And so, the Huff brothers are good business people in your community, they build a good product. And, you know, they're back on the table now, wanting to go ahead and get this done.
Sid, this is a non-conforming use as of right now.
It would be a non-conforming use whenever they're doing the excavation, so we would be allowing them to continue. What I would suggest is, you know, if the board has any interest in negotiating with Ms. Minshew, you know, we could see if the company would be willing to reduce the amount of time that they're requesting. Maybe there's some other provisions that we can negotiate. If there's any interest in that whatsoever, I would just ask you guys to give me that direction to negotiate with Ms. Minshew. And then any agreement would be brought back to you at a later time. And then at that time, you can decide if you want to take it or leave it.
We would consider that, Mr. Chairman. We just want to, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
It's okay.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Apologize. So, any other comments? So, what are your feelings on what Sydney proposed?
I think that's good.
I, I think, Sid, they should do that, they should go back.
And we may not be able to work something out that's agreeable to the board, but we would bring that agreement back to you for your final approval.
Give it a shot. Been ten years anyway, so.
And MAC knows about the large-scale amendment, to go ahead and proceed with that.
Yes, yeah, we need to take care of that regardless of what we do.
Is there a position of the board of a number of years that you would find more amenable so that we knew where we were starting from?
How about three?
Three? I think we could probably do three if we could get some feeling that the board is amenable to that.
Well, I would suggest the quicker you can get it done, the better. If you're going to drag out another five years and nothing happens, then we had just kicked in the can down the road. So, if you're going to really jump on it, jump on it.
I think that's the plan, Mr. Chapman. And if three is more amenable, then I'll work with Ms. Nois to, to work towards that, to get you something and we can present to you in writing.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Ms. Jones?
Questions from the audience? Seeing none, thank you.
And I don't need a motion on that, I have direction from the board.
Would that be back then, before them, the next, in two weeks, or?
We can try to do that, I'll get with you.
Do you know what the date is for that?
That's June 6.
Okay, thank you both, all of you, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
And the final item on my portion of the agenda is a request for direction regarding a proposed, the proposed changes in Land Development Code to move all quasi-judicial land development hearings to a special magistrate. As the board knows, my office, Mr. Davis, previously was directed to make changes to move all quasi-judicial hearings to a special magistrate. Those changes have been drafted, but after some more consideration, I thought it might be best for me to get direction from the board and see if the board would be interested in waiting to make those changes or consider making those changes after the Matrix Group, who the planning department has contracted with, or once they're done with their changes to the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. As you know, we contracted with Matrix Group to make sure that they could clean up our Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan, fix any internal inconsistencies or inconsistencies between those two documents. It may very well be that once we get those changes, the board's feeling on whether or not a special magistrate is advisable could change at that time, once we have that cleaned up. So, I'm just asking for direction and see how the board wants to go.
I think that's a good direction, and, you know, I've said many times that the committees are working well. You know, I appreciate the volunteers that, that do this. So, that wasn't my, my, my goal in this whole thing was to get education, to understand, because so many counties are going with a special hearing officer. So, I, I think, I would feel comfortable if we can mesh the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan better so that it's, if we ever go in this direction, it would be a clear-cut decision instead of the gray areas. I have trouble with the gray areas now, so I'm sure another person would. So, I, I think this is a better, and we have so much going on right now with the BP money, which is a great thing. So, any other comments? Yes, sir, come on up, Mr. Stein. He's one of our volunteers that's been doing this for a long time, and we really appreciate you, Mr. Stein.
Tom Stein, S T E I N. I've been on that board since it was founded twenty-three years ago. I'm currently the chairman. Two years ago, I stood at the same podium and addressed the same issue. I don't understand why it keeps coming up. It seems that the only support to have a magistrate is among the legal community because the public at large seems in favor of keeping, keeping a board of peers to handle these matters. I'll finish real quickly. I'll say that Abraham Lincoln in the Gettysburg Address, and this may have come from the Bible, but surely it came from Lincoln, said that the government we seek is a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. And having these volunteer boards, I think, reflects that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein, anyone else?
Stein.
Anyone else seeing none? We just are directions, all we're doing.
So, I guess if I see no objections, if, and if I get direction, I've got direction from at least two of the commissioners, I think it would be best at this time to put it on hold until we've heard back from Matrix. But obviously, if, if anyone changes their mind, we're not bringing it back.
Well, I haven't changed my mind from our previous discussion on this matter. I, we ought to give the process the opportunity to work, and that's with Matrix coming in there and cleaning our comp and LDC up so we can hopefully minimize a lot of the issues that come up here, whether it's a attorney or whether it's a citizen just trying to build a house or develop two or three lots. So, I'm willing to give it an opportunity to be cleaned up and we'll look at it, we'll get it implemented and give it a fair shake. But that's just my position right now.
I agree.
I know you keep looking at me.
No, sir.
Sid, I don't have a problem with us, with us waiting. I think the most important thing we have to do
Is clean up our comp plan.
in the planning is, is clear up our comp plan and our code.
Yes, sir. Okay, I have direction, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, now it's commissioners' time. Commissioner Tony Anderson, do you have anything today?
No.
Commissioner Sarah Commander.
Yes, I do. I have a request, and I believe y'all have a copy in front of you. Let me see if I can find mine now. There's discussion again about, you know, oil rigs in the, in the Gulf. Back in 2005, we had Resolution Number Thirty-three where we opposed, you know, oil drilling and, and certainly, there's a new twist, or same twist, I guess, just being brought up again about the, the Air Force and their flight path and, and all that kind of stuff. Some of the consortium counties are doing a resolution again to be sent to, to Congress and to our Florida delegation, asking that this not happen. I'm asking for you to consider it and I will make the motion that we adopt this and, and send, I mean, look at what we're doing now, we're talking about restore because of the, the Deepwater Horizon oil spill.
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir.
A motion and a second, any other comments? Comments from the audience on this offshore drilling? Sid, yes, sir?
Frank Day, D A Y. Thank you, Commissioner Commander. Our entire economy revolves around on our ability to attract guests. As many of you remember when the Deepwater Horizon erupted and just the media coverage alone all but shut our visitors down for a couple of years. It affected my business and it affected businesses all across the county, not just those along the coast. I think this is a worthy resolution to participate in and perhaps adding And perhaps adding fracking to it would not be a bad idea as well. Thank you.
Any others? I believe we already have a fracking ordinance, don't we?
Yes, we do. We have a fracking ordinance.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Okay. Next, I want to give you a brief update about the Gulf Consortium. We met when we were in Tallahassee. We met again last week in Destin. Some of the things that we are, we're working on, of course, is the state expenditure plan. The consortium was tasked with coming up with a state expenditure plan. We're working on that. We've had to hire consultants, which is, I'm sorry, don't mean if anybody, but every time you hire consultants, you've got a big delay and that sort of thing. So they are looking at various steps and task orders and that sort of thing to get us to the point to where we can submit our state expenditure plan to the governor, and then it can go to the council. And it has to be approved by the council. One of the things that we need to do, is Anna here in the room? Yeah. We need to, we've already discussed this in workshops and things, but I would like perhaps at our next board meeting, because we can't do it, I have to be able to take our priority to the consortium on the 28th of June. That is a habit to them before then. So if maybe at our next board meeting, Anna could like update us on the 331 project and what we're trying to do and that sort of thing, and us have a consensus so we can move forward with the state expenditure plan. And there is some disagreement in some of the things, which I was really hopeful when we first started this process that we'd all sing kumbaya and get together. And that has not been the case. You know, Walton County was supposed to get like $23 million. And because there are only eight of us counties in the Panhandle, and there are 15 around the state, they voted to share all that money equally, and we lost that vote. So, but we will be getting, hopefully, approximately $11.5 million. I will say at the last meeting, they voted to put all the money in a cookie jar. And those that are further along with their projects, and I'll use Tampa Bay area, for example, they've been working on their storm water and all that for years and years and years before Restore ever happened. Well, they're further along the process than we are. So a lot of the counties want to go ahead and award the money that's put in the pot to these people first and let them, you know. I took a different view. I guess I'm a skeptic because I'm not totally assured that 15 years down the line, that something's not going to happen, and our piece of the pie ain't going to be there because we're not as far along as these people are. So I was the one no vote at the, at the meeting last Wednesday. But I feel like, again, I voted the interest of the people that I serve. So if we could, perhaps, did he put that on the agenda for the next board meeting? And if Anna will get with me and let's, you know, so that we can move forward and I can take our plan to the consortium.
Madam Chair, just a brief thing I would like to. As some of you know, we had a meeting with Treasury this weekend. They flew in, and we worked Saturday and Sunday. And I would like to thank all the county staff that participated in this. They gave up their weekends with their family to come to this meeting. A lot of progress was made. To be honest with you, Treasury went away quite impressed with what we've been doing with the, trying to make, have projects for the Restore money. So there's a lot of money out there. Around $39 million from the, is that, isn't that right, Billy? From the feds. Now, it's a process to get it, but they've dedicated themselves to helping us get it. This has nothing to do with the Triumph Fund, the state money. So a lot of our county staff participated in that on their weekends off, and I'd like to thank them for that and let you know that we have a great county staff that's willing to do whatever we have to do. So thank y'all very much.
I'd like to take that a step further. I'd like to thank the commissioners that were there because, you know, a lot of times, I kind of like to retreat into my house on a weekend, and, you know, especially on Sunday, and kind of recharge my batteries. So, but I want to thank the commissioners that were there. I think it showed, you know, our staff, but it showed that the commission in this county, you know, stand behind. So I want to thank y'all that were there. My third thing is, and I do it every year, Thursday is Red Nose Day. Red Nose Day is where you can go to Walgreens and you can buy three of these for $3.33, and you will help a child that's in need. Yay, Tony! You will help a child that's in need. A child that's hungry, a child that needs educational opportunities. You will help a child in need. Yeah, and I want to use an example close to home. I will take mine on only because I can't talk and use it at the same time. We have a woman in this community. So we have a woman in this community that recently had to go, and I believe it's Jacksonville. Somebody correct me if they know more than I do, and had to now take care of another family's children. Well, it's one thing when you're paying your own family's bills. It's another when you bring two children over here that are malnourished, have been without proper shelter, with improper clothing, with absolutely nothing. And this woman has brought these kids here and is trying to provide for them, you know? So when you think it's not close to home, it is. Somebody wants to get with me later, and let me tell you who this person is. She can use all the help she can use because she said these kids are, I mean, they have literally been starved. So now that there's food available, she said she's going, those kids are going through food like Grant through Richmond. So anybody that wants to know and perhaps help, this is what, one of the things that this does right here is help people in our community that nobody wants to see a hungry child. And I have two left if anybody wants them. But please, go buy Walgreens, buy red nose.
Thank you. Commissioner Melanie Nipper? Vice Chair, Bill Chapman.
Madam Chair, my first item is request the allocation of $45,000 from the Preservation Fund to provide a neighborhood pocket park and dock on the Chalk Hatch Bay in the Fluffy Landing Road and Shady Lane community. If you know where it's at, it'd be east of 331, just above, near the bay. I think in your package, you'll see a rendering of the proposed park. This is a limited right-of-way in there as far as the ability to widen the road or anything. It's kind of hamstrung there. But this here is something at the request of the people that live in and around Jolly Bay and also Shady Lane. So I'm requesting the board authorize $45,000 from the Preservation Fund for this pocket park. So I'll make a motion to do so. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Comments from the constituents? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Madam Chair, the second item I have is I'm going to yield to Mr. Billy Williams back there. But we had a real lengthy discussion between him and Melinda concerning these Pot 1 and Restore Act funds and all that. And I would like for him to briefly, and briefly, hit what we're talking about that came out.
Sorry, what I was about for.
Would you, would you put the buzzer on now so you can?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Going on the tail of what Commissioner Commander said, we have a lot of integral parts that are happening right now with the funds. We did talk about Pot 1 with Treasury, which is the $39 million that the Commissioner mentioned. But I'd like to bring a couple of the Triumph update. They had their first board meeting yesterday post the legislative session. The governor still has not signed that House bill, which, for the public's purpose, again, is House Bill 7077. So I need to bring that up to speed because they will be moving very fast once the two new board members are appointed by the Speaker and by the President. And so we need to look at our infrastructure. We need to look at BP. We need to look at Triumph and the connectivity. So I really need this board to set a special workshop date as soon as possible so that we can go through some of that, brief the board, and begin that connectivity.
Well, I think it's important that we get together in a workshop. We can't talk to each other day to day about any of this. So it'd be the opportunity for staff to come up here, Billy and Melinda, and let's hear it all as to how these different pots is going to affect the decisions we make concerning the infrastructure needs throughout the county and how we can use one to leverage against the other, if that's possible. So I would make a motion that we set a BCC workshop to discuss the infrastructure planning and Treasury and Triumph Board.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Need to make it date specific?
Can we do it the 6th, our next meeting? Billy, are you ready?
I'd cheer your pleasure.
We already got two things on the 6th.
Yeah, we have a meeting that morning, the budget, and then the afternoon, a 4 o'clock meeting. So that's a lot. Let's just look at another day.
I mean, we've got a gap there where like those, you know, we're going to have to stay around the annex anyway, right?
We're up here, we're up here that morning at 9:00.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't look, so we're up here.
Then the board meeting that afternoon.
At 4:00.
But didn't we have something at 3:00, a special meeting or something, didn't we?
Not that I know of.
Maybe we didn't. Which day was that?
The 6th.
The 6th. Well, I don't know. Billy, you got an eyeball or you got an idea of how long?
I think I can brief the board specifically within an hour, and I'll try to address, you know, any specific needs prior to that with the individual commissioners. But I think with Melinda in engineering, we can get, give you an overview of where we are within that hour timeframe.
3:00.
We have time for public input and all that sort of thing. You know, maybe the next meeting up here, which would be the we'd have more time.
We need to go ahead and get this started, though.
So July, so we do not have a meeting that morning because our budget workshop is July the 6th. I put it on the wrong day. So we could do it, we could actually do it. Since we don't have a meeting that morning, we could do it at 2:00, 2:00 that afternoon.
Okay.
Let's do it at 2:00 down there, 2:00.
I amend my motion to 2:00, June 6th, June 6th. Okay.
I amend the second also.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners.
For me, just Happy Memorial Day. I know there's lots of activities going on, and so just choose one so that you can remember our veterans and show how much we appreciate them. And just a word of education, we are having the half-cent sales tax workshops with staff. Does anyone know what days those are? June the 15th? We have two set so that we know what, and I know Buddy Wright and that's, and staff has really been working to see what projects are shovel-ready, what projects are in the bin so that we can, you know, make an educated decision on the half-cent sales tax later. One in the north end and one in the south end, same day. So that's all I have. Karita Smith, would you come up and citizen request? Thank you, Karita, for waiting so patiently and so long.
I was enjoying it, actually. I wanted to say thank you for allowing me to come here today. And I'd like to thank Mr. Wilson for giving me the proper tools in order to become in front of you today. Ms. District 4 Commander, I know exactly what you're talking about, that young lady who's taking care of those children. I just want to put a number in your head today and in the head of the audience, 203. And that's today. We have 203 children who have been abused, abandoned, or neglected and need somebody to speak up for them, to be their voice, to become someone who will take their best interests at heart. And I am with the Guardian at Lighton program. I'm not sure if everyone knows what the Guardian at Lighton program is, but we are the advocacy for those children. Children like the young lady that is taking care of those kids. Children who have nobody to speak up for what's in their best interest or to do what's in their favor. Children who need someone, an individual, someone who will take the time simply once a month to just advocate for them, to make sure that no further hurt, harm, or danger comes to them. Now, today, 203. School is about to be out. That number is definitely going to rise. Each year, we have approximately 44% increase over the summer months. So that 203 will more than likely rise in just Walton County to about 295. So what I'm here today to do is to ask for help, assistance in getting the word out, allowing our agency to come in to the different agencies or different offices and talk with people who may not know who we are, to form some type of alliance to allow employees to have some type of credit in order to work with the Guardian at Lighton program. Because like she said, it's very close to home. 203 is just Walton County. Just Walton County. Even though our circuit covers Escambia to Walton County, the total number of all four counties is well over 1,700 right now. So think of that child who has nobody to speak out for them, that child that's hungry, that child that's sick, that child that can't go home or can't go to anyone else and tell, I'm being hurt, I'm being harmed, I'm being endangered. Teachers are our best resource right now, and I'm working with Mr. Hughes in order to talk to every teacher in every school. But right now, we need the city's help. We need for everybody to take a stand, wear the nose, but know that that nose is attached to a child who needs you. They need food, they need clothing, they need shelter, but more importantly, they need somebody to be their voice, to be for that child, to be there for that child, to advocate for that child, and to see that child through so that they can grow up, go to schools like Auburn, and come back.
Or FSU.
And work in the county and be prosperous and be successful, but just more importantly, to survive. I will come to anyone, Rick knows, I will come to anyone and talk. I will come, I will bring information pamphlets, which I have left at the table there that shows a little bit more about the program and who we are and what we can do, what you can do. My information is on the back. I'm easily accessible, and we are right across the street in the nice teal and green, teal and brown building. So if at any time anybody wants to reach me, here's my number, here's my name, and I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you.
And here's you a red nose.
Next, we have Ann Haig. Thank you for coming back again this year, Ann. We're neighbors, but I don't get to see each other very much.
That's fine. I went by the other day when nobody was home. I was out in golf cart riding. My name is Ann Haig, and I'm here today asking for June 14, 2017 to be recognized as Grandparent Alienation Awareness Day here in Walton County. If anyone were to ask me how parental alienation slash estrangement and grandparent alienation feels, first of all, I would say it's like a silent epidemic. There's so many that you don't hear the story because they're afraid of what people are going to be thinking of them. You know, like, what kind of a person am I? But it's not always us, that person, that has done anything wrong. But it feels as if your children and grandchildren died, but they didn't, and you're mourning their loss. But you can't because you're fighting to get them back. There's no condolences, there's no grieving process. It's like we're discarded marionette dolls, we're stripped bare, we're thrown away, we're cast aside. We're no longer useful to them. You function and hide the grieving pain as best as humanly possible. And this is just with kids getting upset over if they want a down payment for an apartment or, you know, if you quit funding them. And it's also in cases where perhaps the father has died, and then the mother moves away, but the grandparents still live in the state, and therefore usually the spouse will not let them see the kids. So there's so many different scenarios to where the kids are deprived as well as the grandparents. It's hard to let someone go when we don't know why. It's hard to let someone go when we don't know why they're gone. Do we choose to wake up every day and grieve? No. We wake up every day and know a part of us is missing. It's natural to want an explanation and understanding, something that puts their leaving into perspective. It's hard to move on when there's nothing but silence, as though you made the whole thing up. But we can't put our lives on hold, waiting for an answer that may never come. Maybe they will tell us one day, maybe not. Maybe they do not even understand it themselves. Their reason is not that important. What is important is that we don't abandon ourselves in the heart of loss, that we don't make another's presence more important than our own, that we don't lock ourselves in a prison of our own making, waiting for an external liberator to set us free. If they have left, we have to leave too. We have to let the pain through the holes they left behind so it can find its ultimate destination. Our precious life waits on no one. I know personally that I put my kids first without taking care of me, and here I am. I've accepted this, I'm still forgiving myself and trying to move on. I still have lots of moments, but God's grace gets me through. I did what I thought was best at the time, so it is what it is. I no longer allow myself to feel like the victim, sometimes. Instead, I've taken ownership and moved forward. God intended for me to have a life of joy and not despair. Feeling rejected, it's the worst feeling, but I will not allow it to define me and my life. But we do know one of the biggest ways to defeat this is to keep bringing more awareness to those who know nothing or very little about alienation. With awareness comes education and understanding and the power to stop the abuse of innocent children and the elderly left in alienation from the people they love. Laws must be changed as well to protect the rights of these alienated children and grandchildren, to see all their family members, even little cousins, best friends. It doesn't start with me. It's my grandson, and then it affects my granddaughter, and it's just all the extended family members that have no way to understand. I still don't know how my story will end, but nowhere in my text will it ever read, "I gave up." Because you see, I've got it. We've all got it. That's my little man saying, and that's what I'm going with. I've got this. But I'm not going to let it define my life. I will leave a legacy of love whether I can be there or not, and it could happen to any of us. None of us knows what tomorrow's going to bring, or if a child's going to get upset at something. So, I do hope that, you know, you will approve this resolution, and I do thank you for your consideration. And now, I will read the resolution. Whereas strong family relationships constitute the foundation of our communities, and we believe that the children and families of Florida deserve the stay designated to create awareness and education for this little-known and severe form of abuse. And whereas alienation behaviors are frequently present in high conflict divorces, separations, asymmetrical custody arrangements, and intact marriages, often causing mental and emotional anguish to children. And whereas alienation is a term used to describe any number of behaviors and attitudes on part of one or both of the parents designed to interfere, damage, or destroy the relationship between a child and a family member. It is a form of abuse that causes emotional trauma to children. And whereas alienation takes advantage of the innocent and the impressionable as well as the suggestibility and dependency of a child, depriving children of their rights to love and be loved by their extended family. And whereas, mental health professionals agree that the negative effects of alienation can follow a child into adulthood with tragic consequences. And whereas, the recently published Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders made several references to the dysfunctional family dynamic of alienation to be a form of psychological child abuse. And whereas, Grandparent Alienation Awareness Day is intended to increase the knowledge and the understanding of this problem to help families, institutions, the legal and mental health community, and leaders to better identify and combat such abusive behavior toward Florida's most vulnerable populations, the children and the elderly. Now, therefore, the Walton County Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize June fourteen, twenty-seventeen as Grandparent Alienation Awareness Day in Walton County, Florida. And I do hope you all will approve this, and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Ann. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Thank you for bringing this to us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All ayes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I forgot to announce that this week is Public Works and EMS Week. We appreciate our staff so much, appreciate all of you. Uh, there's gonna be lots of activities out at the D-two office, fire trucks, and all kind of fun things, so if you get a chance, come out and visit. Ann Stan has an announcement, and then we'll take public comments.
Is that Thursday?
Thursday. Well, it's all week.
Oh, wait, but the, yeah, events on Thursday?
Yeah, eleven. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quickly, um, for the public's information, we want to make an announcement that tomorrow, Commissioner Commander and the Raw Band Committee are, are meeting at noon at the admin office for those that are interested in attending that.
And also have a visioning session in Freeport tomorrow night.
That's right.
Tomorrow night?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
All right, any other public comments? And this is the time you can speak on anything that you would like to.
Ella Mae, you going somewhere?
She's going to help with Public Works in, in the EMS week at my... Any other, seeing none, we're teasing you.
Kid, go.
Look how obedient she submits to her bosses so well. Um, okay, seeing none, we're moving now into the Matt Carpenter and the Planning and Development Services.
I'm in it to change books. Change faces. Change books.
Thank you, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. Uh, we have a fairly short agenda today. First item, we have a request to hold a special BCC meeting to hear planning-related items on June thirteenth at nine AM at the South Walton Annex. Um, I provided each of you with a tentative agenda for that meeting, um, and this is an effort to avoid piling on to the regular BCC meeting, uh, so we can have plenty of time to consider these requests.
Say ten o'clock?
Nine o'clock. O'clock?
I think I'm outvoted.
It's the pleasure of the board, whatever time that might be.
I'm outvoted. I'm teasing.
I make a motion that we, we approve this at nine o'clock.
Consider seven.
No.
I'm kidding.
I know you are.
Seven sounds good, actually.
Second, on the, on the nine o'clock.
On the nine o'clock.
Motion and a second at nine o'clock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next item is item forty-two. This is a, a, an amendment to the Land Development Code of Walton County, uh, the Chapter Thirteen Plant List Ordinance, which Sydney has been managing for us very well. Uh, we've had a number of workshops at the Design Review Board, uh, interface with our landscape architect professionals, and they've recommended adding some additional native plant material to the list of approved plants that can be used to select, uh, plants for landscape plans in the U.S. ninety-eight, three thirty-one scenic quarter. All of these plant materials, uh, that we're requesting to be added today are native to Walton County.
Mac, is it the blue shaded additions to the code that's in here?
Yes, sir. It's two different documents, and that was my fault. So, the blue shaded is what's being added.
Right. Yeah.
And should be a clean copy as well in your packet.
We, we've got a complete copy of that Chapter Thirteen, uh, attached to the ordinance, um, but the plant list is toward the very back of that in the exhibit section.
Motion to approve.
And this is first reading. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience on the plant list ordinance? Yes, sir, come on up.
Just to, Frank, D-A-Y, just to say I hope Yopan is not on that list.
Okay.
One of the most invasive species right alongside popcorn trees.
Yeah. Thank you. Mac, one of the considerations is, is how well it thrives, is that?
Absolutely, and these are also water-wise, uh, plant materials also.
Great.
That will thrive in our particular climate.
Okay. Have motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you very much.
Next is quasi judicial.
Quasi judicial.
So, anyone who anticipates testifying, if you would please, uh, stand and raise your right hand. Tim and Mac, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth?
Okay.
Uh, has there been any, um, ex parte communication on this item?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none. Mac, if you want to proceed?
Thank you, Sydney. Uh, this is a plat development order application submitted by Interlight Engineering, um, requesting approval to plat ten residential lots on approximately one point oh eight acres with a future land use of traditional neighborhood development. Uh, this is the final step in this development approval, uh, for these ten lots. This development order was, um, previously approved as Development Order sixteen dash zero zero one, zero zero one four three for thirty-five residential lots, uh, by this board on January five, two thousand seventeen. This plat's a portion of only ten of those thirty-five lots. We will have, uh, an additional plat coming forward, uh, as their development progresses. These ten lots are on the easternmost portion of that development site, um, as it moves towards the west.
Any other questions for Mac?
And would request that this staff report be entered into evidence.
Yes.
Available for any questions you might have.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Okay, any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. We are adjourned.
Not too long.